I'd like to call the March 20th Reno City Planning Commission. Order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
................................................
Can we have roll call, please?
Jason Wusley.
Here.
Dennis Romeo is absent. Doug Kaufman.
Here.
Kimberly Locke present. Paul Olivas is absent. Dagny Stapleton.
Here.
Kevin Weiskie.
Here.
Thank you. Next item is approval of minutes of the February 6, 2013.
Move to approve. Commissioner Kaufman.
Second.
Do we have any objections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The record motion, the motion carried. Five to zero. Moving on to city council liaison reports.
Did you skip public comment?
No.
Oh, I did. Like to open public comment. This item is for either general public comment or for public comment on an action item. If the comment on an action item, please place the addenda item number on the request to speak form. Like to open public comment. Anybody have public comment? Close public comment? All right. Moving on back to city council liaison reports.
None this evening.
All right. Moving on to public hearings. Any person who has chosen to provide his or her public comment when a public hearing is heard will need to so indicate on their request to speak form provided by the secretary. Alternatively, you may also provide your comment when item three public comment is heard at the beginning of the meeting. Moving on to item number one. TXT 12-00009 Midtown District. May I have the city's representative, please?
Jody Royall-Goodwin, Housing and Neighborhood Development Administrator for the record. So, we're here about, the proposal before you is for text amendments to establish specific zoning for the Midtown District which was recently created through master plan amendment, which includes two sections, the commercial section and the residential section. And so, first, it started about a year ago with the master plan amendment and there was a series of meetings held for that. We came before you with, and then the council adopted that. So then we started on the text amendments. We had three neighborhood meetings that were not the requirements. And then we've gone through the public requirement as well, went to the Ward 3 nab, the Ward 1 nab, we tried to go to twice, but both of those meetings were canceled. So, we've had a significant amount of public input in this process. And so, the proposed amendments, we, I think are fine, I don't know if fine is the right word, but a good balance between the regional plan goals and requirements, the master plan as a whole, and then the neighborhood desires. We took a lot of that into consideration in terms of what, what did they want to maintain their, the character of their neighborhood, which was a big thing that came out in their master plan amendment, as well as their quality of life, and then ensure that we were meeting the goals of the, of the regional plan. The, as you can see in the, in the proposed amendment, how the density changes from the core along Virginia Street in the commercial district where it's a minimum of 18, again, kind of furthering the, the regional plan goal of intensifying the use in those transit-oriented corridors. And then it moves out to in the balance of the commercial section being 30 units to the acre, and then six, down to 16 in the residential section. And that was based up on specific request by the neighborhood, the residents that participated to address the concern of overshadowing and then transitioning into the adjacent neighborhood, which falls under the Plumas Neighborhood Plan, I do believe. And so, and in addition, there are obviously setbacks and height requirements or limits put in place. And so, there was agreement at that point, and since then, there's been some additional comments that include, if you notice in the, in the table of allowed uses, financial institutions are not allowed. And that's because there was an express request to not include payday loan servicing, because there are already three providers of that type of service in the community, but you can't dis, they, they fall under the same regulation under Nevada revised statute. So, there is, you received a letter, I believe, today from Chuck Shaw related to a proposal to do that. We're recommending not, there are a number of banks either in the district or immediately adjacent to the district, including three major financial institutions within one block here on the north end. Heritage Bank is the one I'm positive is in the middle. And so, and there are other banks on the outside, so they're still readily available. The next issue that was brought up was the floor area ratio in the commercial district and a request to lower that from 1.0. And we did not do that in the proposal because in the regional plan, the goal is to hit 1.5 in transit-oriented development corridors. And currently, it's actually at, if you take out the, the more vacant lots such as the parking lots and the used car dealerships, that would be properties that are, are ready for redevelopment, you're at 0.75 already. So, it would, it's not a big leap to get to 1. And then on those other properties that have existing structures, if you're moving, if you're not taking down that existing structure, you could move towards it and still be in compliance with the, with the requirements. And then the other request that came, and I don't know if you received that or not, was the, a request to increase the density limit in the residential section to more than 16 units per the acre to facilitate future development. And I'm not really sure what kind of information you want out of me, so I'll answer any questions and I hope I didn't give you too much detail.
Great. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to open public comments on this public hearing here. And before we do that, can we have any disclosures? Does anybody have any disclosures?
Commissioner Weiskie, I have none.
Commissioner Stapleton, I talked to a concerned member of the public.
Commissioner Wusley, I have none.
Commissioner Locke, I have none.
Commissioner Kaufman, I've had none.
Great. Thank you. All right. I'd like to open public comments. I have a few request to speak forms in front of me. You can also, if you'd like to come up and speak, just fill out a form, please. But we'll start here. We'll start with Eric Raiden wishes to make a statement.
Good evening, Commissioners and folks in the, in the audience here. My name is Eric Raiden. I'm one of the managing members of the Marmot Companies. We've been very fortunate and frankly blessed to be very active in the revitalization of the Midtown neighborhood, including the West of Wells and Old Southwest areas. We are here to, to express our humble opposition to the proposed revisions to the Midtown zoning, specifically the downzoning. What you're looking at here is a before-after of one of the older farmhouses in the Midtown neighborhood, specifically, this is on Toma Street. This, this house was in very bad shape. Wasn't up to code in any way, shape, or form. In fact, it didn't actually even have any structural components to it. We went in, you know, for all intents and purposes, it had been abandoned. We went in and rehabbed this building in, in the Midtown, heart of the Midtown neighborhood. Here's what it looks like afterwards. Everything is up to code. It's been brought up to, to today's life safety standards, structural standards. It is now a two-unit home, two stories. Each unit rents for less than $1,000 a month, so it's pretty affordable. It's also got a big lot in the back which faces a nice alley. But quite frankly, we would not have done this renovation, we would not have removed this blight in the neighborhood if the proposed downzoning had gone through, because it would have removed the potential for additional alley units. This was quite an expensive renovation. We need that added density not only to improve the character of the neighborhood, improve the number of heads and beds, as it were, that feed into the local retail businesses, but we also needed it to make that kind of reservation, that kind of quality economically viable. You know, additionally, we have a property at 124, 126 Caliente. Similar story, pretty nice property, but it was in financial distress. We came in and bought it from some other investors. What you're seeing here, sort of towards the top of the screen, are the two existing structures. These are beautiful, classic brick structures. And then you see our proposed buildings towards the back on the alley. What's currently there is a dilapidated brick garage that we have determined is structurally unsound. There are also two sheds that, that frankly are not pretty. So what we're proposing to do is to tear down the, the old brick garage, which, you know, it's again structurally unsound, as well as the, as well as the two sheds, and put in a nice articulated duplex that fits, fits in the neighborhood. Again, with the proposed downzoning, MF 16 Midtown Residential Zoning, our planned renovation would not be permitted. The most we'd be able to do is put in one unit in the back. And again, it's, if the desire is to upgrade the neighborhood, increase the population, increase the population that is feeding in all these retail businesses that are frankly thriving, we believe that this is respectfully a step in the wrong direction. You only need to look to see what's happening at the, with the Sparks TOD, where they have tastefully, or they have come up with a solution that allows for tasteful infill with four units per 7,000 square foot lot, or MF 25, which is quite reasonable. We share your concerns about the aesthetics of the neighborhood and the overshadowing problem. We don't want to see big cinder block commodity apartments where you're just stuffing people in like, you know, cattle. But what we do want to see is a vibrant, thriving community with new residents coming in who can afford to live there and shop there.
At this time, I'll call Gary Raiden, please.
Thank you.
Wishes to make a statement?
I'm also a member, a member of-
Sorry, can you state your name for the record, please?
Sorry. My name's Gary Raiden. I'm also a member of the Marmot Companies. Eric and I are partners along with our older brother. I live in the West of Wells neighborhood at 307 Moran Street. And we, we looked at the plan and specifically, we understand the, what the plan's trying to accomplish, and we are actually in agreement with a lot of what's going on with the plan. And we've been coming to the meetings and, you know, we like the, a lot of the proposals, but specifically, we oppose the downzoning of the section that's west of Virginia to MF 14. And specifically, we think the moving that, the current limits there from about a block and a half, and everything past that being MF 13, while well-intentioned, I think, kind of misses what the neighborhood needs. We've looked at it pretty heavily. One of our big goals and one of the things that we're always pushing for in, in Midtown and in everything we do is, is number one, retail, which, thank God, I see the, a couple of our giants of retail sitting behind me over here, guys. But they need density on both sides of Virginia, not just the West of Wells side, in order to kind of continue to drive the blight out of Virginia. I think we would all agree that there's a lot of unsavory businesses, and we've seen a lot of really wonderful changes happening the last several years. And those guys are largely driven by having people in the neighborhood. And having a lot of it is driven by walkability. And that's the other thing that we're always hammering on and always trying to achieve is walkability. And when you look at the walkability, you know, the, the sort of golden standard is about three blocks. And that's one of the more specific things that we would propose is that moving, you know, if you want to go to less density, which I understand the desire to have that and to maintain more of a residential neighborhood farther down, but I think if you're looking at three blocks in, and if you drive up and down and walk up and down that section like I do every single day, you know, that's a pretty good zone. That makes it very walkable for people who live there in the higher density areas to kind of walk in and walk to soup or to, you know, the local hardware store, which is fantastic. The other thing that we oppose is the move to MF 16. I know that a lot of people got pretty upset, and rightly so, about a massive development kind of in the southern portion of this. But I think about 95% of all the available lots and land in that area are much smaller. They're really that typical 7,000 square foot lot. And so I've thrown this up here just to look at kind of what drives that. You know, if you go to MF 16, you can only get two units on a lot. And if you've got two units on a lot, unfortunately, this stays because you can't do anything. So you've got junk like this and, and you don't have any economic impetus behind you to add units. So you keep old junk because there's no money to be made in putting a single family on the back. The, I took some other pictures, too, kind of in the same zone. I was just walking around today. This one, my favorite eyesore. You know, this thing needs to go. The house needs to be rehabbed. It's a big lot. It, it's just begging for somebody to come in and do something with it. But if you move, and this is within three blocks, you know, if you, if you kill the density in here, there's no financial incentive for somebody like ourselves or anybody else to come in and, I mean, look at this thing. The pictures make it look nice, relative to speaking to what the thing actually looks like. And this is over on Caliente Street, across from several properties that we own. You know, somebody's got to come in and buy this eyesore and remove this thing. But if you can't do any additional density on it, it's just going to stay the way it is. You know, and that's really why we oppose it, is because we look at the density and we think that if you come to, Eric, can you throw that back up there? You know, if you can bring it up to somewhere along closer to MF 24, MF 25, a typical lot is going to actually support three or four units. And that's a really tasteful, not-too-dense development. You know, we oppose the idea of having cinder block high-rises in there, or, you know, these, these terrible commodity apartments that nobody cares about and that, you know, they just look terrible and, and, you know, and so what we're looking for is, you know, the first proposal really from us is we'd love to see that pushed out to three blocks. And we'd like to see that at MF 25 or MF 30. You know, to kind of address some of the, the issues that were raised, because I think this downzoning is the wrong tool to accomplish what I think we all want to accomplish. You know, we kind of discussed, you know, do you do massing restrictions rather than the zoning, downzoning? And I, I think that's a beautiful idea. You know, we want to do townhomes in the neighborhood. You know, do you do ground level entry only? And maybe two-story or three-story limitations, you know, through setbacks, so that you don't get massive or, you know, eliminate exterior stairways, you know, up to the second levels where you tend to get, you know, that sort of generic apartment building. I think there's a lot of tools at your disposal. Respectfully, I would suggest that this downzoning to one and a half blocks is the wrong tool to accomplish what, what the people have asked you to accomplish. And I think it also chokes off a lot of the redevelopment that's happening, not only for residential redevelopers like ourselves, but also for the, the retail and business folks that have really been making Midtown what it is and make it like the bright shining star of Reno right now.
Can I ask 30 more seconds?
So we hopefully request it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
If I can jump in really quick. Claudia Hansen, planning engineering manager. The, excuse me, the standard they're referring to is on page 94, the proposed ordinance under the residential section of density, where it states maximum density shall be 16 units per acre, and they were talking about 25 to 30, just to focus you on where that is in the ordinance.
Claudia, can I just, can I just follow up with staffer question real quick? Is there a map also of what he's talking about in terms of-
I was just going to ask Jody to bring that up. I was just getting up to get that. Page nine.
I have another request to speak form. Bernie Carter.
Thank you, Commissioners, for not being able to speak before you today. There are several items in the commercial portion of the Midtown project which I would appreciate your consideration. And I'll go through those, enumerate those, and why I believe that we're opposed to them, because I think it inhibits continued development in the Midtown area and continued growth in that area. And as alluded to previously, that seems to be the area that has the most activity and has the most positive things going. So the last thing we want to do is to inhibit those things, obviously under the confines of, of good, good planning. The first item would be item under seven, under Midtown would be one, general standards, and that deals with building orientation. And the question is that it says that it must be oriented towards the front street with the main entrance based on the front facade of the building.
Excuse me, Mr. Carter. Can you tell us what page you're on, please? And keep us up-
I don't have the current one. I worked off, off of page 13, item number 7-1, I believe. And that's from the work group that we had a couple of weeks ago. This one right here, 13-1.
It starts on page 91.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jody.
Yes, 91.
91. Okay. Thank you. And the reason that we're opposed to that, because this project that we currently have under construction, the Sticks project, we, we developed our own street. And so our intent is to have those retail spaces face that street. That's where the parking is. It's not based on South Virginia Street. And we will have displays on South Virginia Street so that the windows that people can actually look in and see product will be available there. But there'll not be doors, front doors on that street. There'll actually be access towards the center of the street where the whole development is. It's similar to what you would have with a, a campus-type setting. We're developing a small-town type setting where the street that we've developed and built through the middle of the corridor would be the orientation, not South Virginia Street or not Center Street, nor would, would Toma Street be that orientation. The second issue that we'd like to address deals with, and I'm trying to find where that is. Okay, this would be, and I don't know your page number, it'd be under B. My page number's 15. But it would continue on. It's, it's basically two streets or two pages after that, I apologize, under the commercial section, and that is the, the FAR of 1.0. We've been in developing in Midtown a little over four years now, and we don't have a single building that we're working on that is a 1.0. As I indicated previously in the meeting upstairs, the Sticks project that we're currently building on is a five, is a .5. And we had a hard time meeting that, having to put in some second-story buildings. So any new development that requires that is, doesn't make a lot of economic sense and doesn't make a lot of planning sense. Let me give you an example. The Delmar Station, which we're all familiar with, is not a 1.0. And it's, it basically covers the whole lot. But there is a five-foot area that's in front of the building, that's private property, that's part of the sidewalk, that is not part of that construction. So you know the density of that, it's building line to building line on three sides, but the fourth side isn't, so it doesn't meet a 1.0. The Sticks project that we redid doesn't meet that. And keep in mind that we have to meet these requirements whenever we build, which means everything from the deck in front of soup to the new construction that we're doing, to the construction in Delmar. So all of those apply. So our request is to remove entirely, as you have in the balance of that, Todd, all requirements for an FAR. The next item deals with item number nine, or number five, excuse me, hours of operation. And it talks about new business is not adjacent to Virginia Street. There are currently existing businesses that do not meet that requirement. For example, on Martin Street, the craft beer place does not, is not based on South Virginia Street and, and is a very successful business and would have to close at 11 o'clock. It doesn't make a lot of sense to be able to do that. In addition, the Public House, which is on St. Lawrence Street, has the same criteria. We're putting in a restaurant in the Delmar Station that his orientation will be primarily, it's going to be a French small-plate type restaurant. His, his orientation is to hit those people that get off work at midnight and 2:00 in the morning. So he'll be open until 2:00 in the morning to be able to offer food to those people. So it doesn't make a lot of sense to be, to close them at 11 o'clock. It makes it basically uneconomical for them to stay in business. And that's, I don't think, what we want to do in our, in the Midtown Project. I believe that's, those are the primary considerate, or concerns that I have. The other thing which I would request, and I, I don't know if this is the proper place to put it, Claudia, you can probably help me with this, and that deals with, with fixture units. And I request that in the Midtown area that fixture units may be traded between properties in the Midtown area, similar to what you do with water rights and with RTC credits. And the reason I'm requesting that is that for us to continue to develop, we are looking at properties that have excess fixture units. And what, it doesn't make sense to, to us to buy those, abandon those, and then have to put new ones or buy additional fixture units in new projects that we're doing. So for us to continue to do that, it only makes sense to be able to transfer those, like I said, the same thing that you do with water rights and the same thing you do with RTC credits. So I request that that be added to the commercial section of the Midtown Project. Thank you very much, and I'll be available for questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. That's all the request to speak forms I have. Do I have anybody else that'd like to speak? Okay. At this time, I'd like to close public comment. Bring it back to the commission for questions. Doug?
Commissioner Kaufman.
Commissioner Kaufman, please.
This is to Claudia. Where, on the density, what, what page was that where we were looking at? And I thought I read this, that the minimum is MF 14.
That's in the, Claudia Hansen, planning engineering manager. 14, I believe, is in the commercial section. The density that the Marmot Representatives were discussing is on page 94, the 16 units breaker. There was a lot of discussion in the neighborhood meetings on the density, and it was kind of all over the place during our multiple meetings. It kind of landed at 16 at the end as the maximum. At one point, it was up in the low 20s. I think it started off at 30. It started off at 30. Kind of second meeting, it went down to mid to low 20s, and then at the last meeting, it went to 16. So we had presented some examples of what the, those densities look like. There's quite a bit of development in the low 20s that we gave examples of in that area, so it's not an uncommon density in that area. I think I've gone beyond your question, so I'll stop. Page 94.
Well, the, the, I guess the real, I guess if it's a big issue, the question is, and if there's a lot of 20s, why would we change it back to 16?
Like I said, it's, at a number of the meetings, there were, it was not unanimous at any of the meetings. I'll, I'll say that. There were a number, there were a few people who wanted it in 16. There were some people who wanted it lower than 16. But there were quite a few people who were okay with it in the 20s as well. We brought forward the 16 as a, as a discussion and consideration.
Okay.
I think, an example of the development kitty corner from Peerless Dry Cleaner. There's some, I don't know if they're apartments or condos on that.
Cassin apartments.
What's that?
Cassin apartments.
Cassin apartment. And I did, I, that was in our presentation for, on the Todd workshop a couple times, a couple meetings ago. And I think that one was at 21 or 23, somewhere in that range. twenty-three, somewhere in that range, just to give an example of what a multifamily development would look like.
Okay, and then Bernie brought up the FAR being 1.0, and again, I think the discussion in the meeting prior to this one was, the master plan was 1.5? Was that, was I?
The master plan is one, but the regional plan, I have it right here, Claudia. So the regional plan requires provide for a minimum floor area ratio for non-
Excuse me, can I get you to speak into your microphone, please? I can't hear you.
I'm not used to sitting over here. The regional plan's policy for minimum floor area ratio is that provide a minimum floor area ratio for non-residential developments and mixed-use developments of 1.5 FAR within TOD corridors, station areas, and centers. Between station areas, minimum floor area ratio must be at least .25. And in the city's master plan, in the South Virginia Street, Todd, in the section, it's one.
And did we change that? Then did we, I mean, did we change that in this Midtown, or?
Did we change what was in our master plan?
Well, did, has it always been one, I guess? Is that, that's a question?
As long as I've been working on this for the past year, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow on this conversation with a question? So the idea is that currently, this is a Todd, right, as we all know, so this is sort of fine-tuning some of those, this plan replaces some of those Todd standards. So right now, what is the, so I think the issue for the neighborhood was currently those Todd standards at high density and minimum density requirement went all the way back pretty deep into that residential neighborhood, about six or seven blocks, I think, and they were worried about that. What, so, and then I understand there's a lot of discussion about the different densities that they wanted to come down from. Right now, in the Todd, if, you know, obviously without this proposed plan in place, what's the density in that residential portion, and is there a minimum density or?
It's a minimum density right now, so there, it's, there's no maximum at this point.
There's no maximum density, okay.
There's no maximum, right.
All right, so this discussion is obviously bringing this down from a, you know, as much density as they want to what's going to be that ceiling for the maximum amount of density.
Correct.
And what this proposes is MF sixteen.
Sixteen is what's in the draft right now.
Okay.
And I would say that's before the Todd, back when we had just MF zoning in that area, there was quite a bit of MF thirty in the area and MF twenty-one in the area, and MF fourteen was kind of a mix in that area, but they were all definitely present in this neighborhood.
Okay, Commissioner Kaufman, again, why did we go to a maximum if it was kind of a minimum before?
And I'm, Jody, you can jump in whenever you want, it was, go ahead.
So it was really the request of the neighborhood. There was, the residents who participated in the meetings were concerned about losing the character within the neighborhood, while it's eclectic, it is a character, I guess, but, and the, and that not losing the reasons they went there to live, so not losing some space, you know, they didn't want to live on, they didn't want to be in the intense, intense development, so, and like Claudia said, we went through and we showed them examples of really high, really, I mean, really high that was done really well and lower, and this is kind of where it fell. So it was at their request, not our, I mean, we were going, like I said, with a maximum more of thirty, simply because it did provide that transition between the commercial section to the Plumas neighborhood.
Thank you.
Can I jump in again? I'm sorry, and this might answer Commissioner Kaufman's question also. Some of us know this because we went to some of these workshops, but there's a really long sort of story behind why this was opened up again, both in the Midtown commercial corridor part as well as this residential part. I don't know if I'm the correct person to tell that story, but there was a whole lot of concerns of the residents over there. I'm actually a little disappointed that there's nobody here from that neighborhood because they asked for this and there's, or nobody that came to speak from that neighborhood because they asked for this, and there's, you know, they had concerns about not only the character, but there's a lot of historic properties over there, that they, this is one of our older historic neighborhoods, and that they were concerned that you shouldn't, you know, essentially in the Todd corridor, you could have a high-rise, right? It's this high density and that, and that Todd overreached by going so deep into that residential neighborhood. So they had all kinds of concerns, and so this plan was crafted to address all those concerns. I don't know if there's anybody here who can sort of give that background or tell that story, but I think that's an important part of this discussion. And like I said, I'm a little disappointed that there's no advocates from that group who've, you know, offered their, you know, to speak or tell that story. I don't know if Jody can or if there's members, people in the audience who, you know, didn't speak who have that information. I just, I do think that's an important part of this.
And that was Commissioner Stapleton for the record.
I'm so sorry, Commissioner Stapleton.
Do we have a comment? Go ahead, come ahead.
You can fill out your form after you speak.
Afterwards, yeah. And please state your name for the record.
For the record, my name is Billy Andrews, and I live at eleven zero eight Plumas Street. I am right on the western boundary of Midtown, and under the Todd, I had no protection. Somebody could knock down a wonderful little nineteen-thirties brick bungalow next door to me and build, you know, a three-story, multiplex apartment building. And so that was, that was the concern of people that live in a strictly residential area like I do, with single-family homes, is that we, we wanted the character of the neighborhood preserved, we wanted to protect ourselves from having a big, multi-unit project put in next door. I took my, got my training from the best in the West of Wells neighborhood, you know, so that we would become proactive and get some zoning restrictions so it wouldn't have a lot of the things that they do have in West of Wells, where there, you know, there was a period of time when they built great, huge, ugly apartment buildings next to cute, little, wonderful bungalows. So, you know, when you hear the proposals, and I know that people don't have time to take everything on an issue by issue, that we weren't trying to stop developments like you have proposed, that it was to protect our own neighbor, you know, for our own residential area from having big, ugly things. And I walk down Caliente all the time to go to the, to the hardware store, okay? And so I know, I know those properties, and that one's got big scary dogs in it, too. It's like I always cross, that's where I make sure I'm on the other side of the street. So, I mean, that's the rationale. It wasn't that we're trying to stop blights from being torn down and something, you know, with four units built on a lot. And in fact, I own a property next to mine that has five units. It appears to be a single-family home, but there's apartment in the basement and a duplex on the alley. But, you know, and that's why I can't sell it, because I want to retain it to always look like a single-family dwelling. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question, please?
Go ahead.
So we, I guess what I'm trying to get through my little brain here is, I understand where you're coming from, I understand where these developers are coming from also. And part of it is, from the pictures they showed me, that seemed to fit well into Midtown, okay? What they plan, what they're, what they're doing, it keeps integrity there. So since you're only one of the many that have come to the meetings, would, if we put a stipulation in that that would have to be reviewed or they'd have to come before us for a variance to up that, you know, does that satisfy, you know, the homeowners also?
I'm sure, I mean, I can't, I can't be the spokesperson, okay, I will speak for all the residential, single-family.
No, no, I'm really a-
Right, you know, but I think that would, because it wasn't, I think that everyone on Caliente would be very happy to see their proposed development as opposed to what's there.
The example is, the house that they showed, I'm sure you wouldn't like that house next year.
No.
You know, I mean, I, you know, as a homeowner, I mean, I'm the, you know, kind of the same way. I mean, I, I would like, you know, if the opportunity would arise, somebody to come in and fix that up, but again, it has to be economically feasible for them to do it also. Okay.
So, yeah, so I hope I answered your questions or cleared that up. I'm not sure how eloquent I was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could jump in there, you wouldn't be able to require a variance for density?
Billy? I'm sorry. Could you come, fill out a card, thank you.
You can't go through the variance process for density, but just to, there were also some comments that were mentioned regarding building height, it may be restricted by building height, which we do have right above the density requirement to two stories, so that, that limit is already in there. And also, on page ninety-two, there's a number of design criteria that are still required. So you would, they would still need to have, if you look at, these are all under general standards, starting on page ninety-one, there's a number of prohibited materials, and then relationship to surrounding development, there's limitation and requirements on the design of the project, which I think covers some of the concerns that she raised also. So we do have those in there, so just to bring those to your attention.
So we couldn't stipulate a variance, and is you're saying on-
You can't vary density.
Okay. So the only thing, if we wanted to, we could increase the density.
You could increase, yeah, you could, you could raise the maximum now.
So from sixteen to twenty-four, sixteen to twenty-two?
Yeah, you could do that now, right. But they would still, even if they went, if, whatever it ends up being, if it's twenty-five or whatever it is, they would still have to meet all this design criteria that we have in here.
Yeah, exactly.
They still can, and actually limiting it to two stories in and of itself is going to kind of limit how many units you can get on there anyway, so it's still going to keep it somewhat in character. You wouldn't be able to have those three-story type multi-story, multifamily products.
Commissioner Wieski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gary or Eric, you guys had a sketch of the one property on Caliente that showed three residences on it, I believe. Would you mind putting that up so I can reference that? I don't necessarily have questions for you guys, it's for staff, but I want to reference your drawing if you don't mind.
Sure.
Could I also make a quick comment?
Let me ask my question first, and then I'll call you up and see what you got to say, okay? Thank you. Claudia, in this case, it looks like we, the sketch shows four different residences on this property. It could be, yeah, we see, I see two structures and I see, looks like they're subdivided. So let's say that there was four dwelling units on this property. Could a person, if they built both those, and the sizes were right, I guess, have a first floor and a second floor and turn it into eight apartments? And how would that affect, where would that move us from MF sixteen to what? Because we saw a chart earlier that showed MF thirty-five on a 7,000-square-foot lot would only support-
So Eric, what's the density on this one right now?
Five.
Sorry, I'm gonna ask him a question.
If you would, introduce yourself and speak into the mic, please.
Hi, this is Eric Raiden with the Marmot Companies, again. The current zoning or density on that particular property, which is one-two-four, one-two-six, Caliente, is currently MF thirty, which would-
That's the proposed?
No, that's the, that's the current. The proposed is MF sixteen, and so when you look at our drawing, let me just walk you through this. So the buildings here, those are two one-story buildings, they're really cute brick bungalows. All we've done is upgrade life safety and, you know, make them livable.
Okay, but my question is not for what the existing buildings are. I see two structures there, it looks like they could be subdivided.
Right.
And if, with this new proposed ordinance, if they were two stories, that could be eight units.
It could have been the density, but I'm thinking it's going to go over the density if you go to eight on a lot that size.
Yeah, no, you couldn't, because if you look at, under the current zoning of MF thirty, the maximum number of residents you could have on the lot is 4.82. So you couldn't, you couldn't turn the back duplex into a fourplex, that would be non-conforming.
Okay.
And parking's also going to limit what you can get on there also.
Parking is a problem, yeah.
Because you still have the parking requirements, which will take up space as well.
Even though it's in the Todd corridor, we'll still have parking requirements that we throw that over?
Yes.
Okay, so if, what I'm, what you guys are helping me get to is a discussion of an increase from MF sixteen to an MF twenty-four, let's say, where it would allow 3.85 or four, because you would round this one up, or not, Claudia? Yes or no? If it's 3.85 on this particular exercise we're using, would, it would be rounded up to?
Are we talking space, what are we talking, what's 3.85, sorry, I needed-
For, for the residents on the 7,000-square-foot lot.
Okay, oh, you can get 3.85 units?
Yes.
Then you could have three.
Then you could have three, not four.
You round down on density.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
That's why we, you know, using this project as a proxy, which we think is scaled appropriately for the neighborhood and also has appropriate architectural elements, including articulation, rather than just sort of a beige box. When we worked with our architect, Mike McGonigal, we felt that MF thirty potentially can, you know, drive some problems, and you get the generic boxes that nobody likes. But if you marry MF twenty-five with height restrictions and design standards, including, you know, stipulations that the building has to sort of meet, meet the surrounding character, you know, for example, brick to brick, and you can require articulation in your structure, then you not only improve the streetscape, but you actually, you know, wind up with some really nice properties. So if you look at our drawing, if you look at our drawing, we've articulated the buildings. We don't have to do that. If you're familiar with our projects, we keep all the bungalows, we don't tear them down.
Okay, I'm not talking about putting together an ordinance so that you guys can build and continue to grow a business, I'm talking about the whole community and the people that come in after you.
Sure.
Or your neighbors that are existing. So I, that's why I don't want to get into a specific, what Marmot is doing, and I'm keeping my personal opinions out of it because I don't want that to influence my thought process. I want to look at this generically, and that's why I'm looking at, you know, a 7,000-square-foot lot with square footage of structure on it and number of residences based upon what code is.
Right, so if you look, so if you're looking for a real-world proxy rather than just what we Marmots want, look to the Sparks TOD, where they've got the, you know, the regulations governing a 7,000-square-foot lot, and if you marry that with, with design standards using the West of Wells neighborhood as a proxy, I think you strike a pretty good balance with keeping neighborhood character, keeping, you know, keeping the existing residents happy and still moving the ball forward on urban revitalization, not only at the residential level, but at the retail level.
Okay, thank you. Now, can you do me a favor and put the other document back up that you have with the ratios? There you go, thank you. Claudia, if I read this right, MF twenty-four would allow eighteen-hundred-and-eighteen, on MF twenty-four, a single-family residence would be allowed an eighteen-hundred-and-eighteen square-foot, single-family home on it, correct? On this, on a 7,000-square-foot lot? That's what this is based on?
That's square foot per residence is what that says.
Oh, per residence.
Three units.
Okay, with a maximum of three units. Okay, with a maximum of three units.
According to this, yes.
Okay, I mean, I'm just, and I'm not saying that that came straight out of City of Reno ordinance, I'm just using it as numbers.
Yeah, I'm just looking at his numbers.
Right now, yes.
I'm checking his math.
Okay, I know, we're not going there. Okay, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your brother wanted to say something, is it generic or is it Marmot specific? Okay, come on up then.
Again, for the record, I'm Gary Raiden with the Marmot Companies. And generically, what, what we were saying was the, the Plumas neighborhood, we totally agree. And that is, I think it's, you'd have to tell me, I think it's about eight blocks in or deeper. We think there's a lot of character there that should be preserved, and a lot of that should be zoned a little bit less than?
But we're not dealing with those in the Plumas Street Plan, right?
Well, none of the Plumas Street Plan, but currently it goes all the way down. So all, my, my comment, comment is simply that we agree that, that deeper in, there should be restrictions, you know, to lessen the density. But that a block and a half, as the plan currently calls, is too narrow of a band. And we propose three to five blocks in to kind of have the character that you want.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Stapleton, do you have a question?
Yeah, you, you made the comparison of, you know, what could, what could get us there in terms of having just enough, you know, enough density to allow development, but then enough, you know, limitations and standards so that it's not, you know, the kind of development that Billy was talking about that we don't want, or some of, for example, when, you know, in the 70s, when Wells was upzoned to MF-40, some of the developments we got that have really taken away from the neighborhood. You use the West of Wells design standards as an example, which some of are in here, and then you use the Sparks Todd as an example. What is the density in the Sparks Todd?
I don't know.
Well, I figured, I thought maybe, I'm sorry, I thought staff would know the answer to that question, but I just heard MF-25, so thank you.
I know City of Reno ordinance, but I don't know City of Spark ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Locke, do you have any questions?
Well, to cut to the chase, I would be very comfortable upping it to MF-25, but definitely not expanding the perimeter. I think it, pushing it back into the neighborhood, I think, what is it, a block and a half? That seems just fine to me. Can I add, can I add something?
Commissioner Stapleton?
What, what I'm thinking about in terms of this discussion, if we were going to talk about an increase in density from what's proposed in the plan, is making sure that those sort of design standards are in there so that we can't just have boxy, you know, in our, you know, stuff that is really not complementary to what might be a historic bungalow next door, but still be able to have some of that higher density. So I'm just looking, and this is going to be a question for Claudia and Jody, but, well, I, I'll direct everyone to page 92. It looks like under section five, there are some specific, you know, design-oriented standards in here. So I think that those are a really good start, and that is similar to what's in the Wells Avenue neighborhood plan. I think that that's where, where those came from. So my question is for staff.
I'm sorry, we're just clarifying the density boundary right now. It may already be, let me have Jody put up the map.
Okay, I, and, and I do have, I think that's something I want to clarify too, but my question was just about in terms of the design standards that are right now in this, in the plan. And Jody, I think those came from the Wells Avenue neighborhood plan, some of these design standards you pulled, pulled a little bit, okay. So my concern is, it looks like we've got stuff that graduates the building height and mass, so that's sort of respectful of surrounding properties. It looks like orientation in terms of windows, porches, balconies, that's important. Landscaping, roof pitch, dormers and sloping roofs, okay. The roof pitch is in relationship to adjacent structures, which is important. So it's an important consideration. Some of these may be even more specific than what we have in the Wells Avenue neighborhood plan. I don't know, Claudia, if you?
I think it is slightly more detailed. What we wouldn't say is we don't want to specify a specific roof pitch, because that's just a nightmare to administer into design too.
Of course. So my question, the only thing I don't see is setbacks to ensure?
Setbacks would cover under?
So say, for example, if it was a MF-25, what's the setback requirement? And there's a height limit right now that limits it to two, right, so what's, what's the setback currently? And there's, and then there's a height limit that limits it to two stories essentially, right?
Correct. So if you look on page 88 for setbacks, front on All Streets Midtown District Residential Section, if existing landscape parkway exceeds the requirement, the larger landscape parkway shall be maintained. New development must not vary by more than three feet from adjacent development with a minimum 10-foot setback. So that's saying you have to be at least 10, but you can't marry, vary more than three from your neighbors.
What does that mean? You can't vary more than three from your neighbors?
So you have to be back at least 10, and if you're at, if you're, to go back at least 10, I'm trying to think of a good example, and your neighbor's at 15, then you need to be at 12. So within three, you need to be between 12 and 18 if they're at 15.
Are we talking side setbacks or back rear?
We're talking front.
Front setbacks?
Front setbacks.
Aren't front setbacks from the street? I know, it's probably a dumb question.
In this section, we made it from property line.
Aren't all of these, you have to orient to?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, we, no, I'm sorry, it's from curb, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, so I'm working through, I think, about side setbacks and rear setbacks?
Okay, so side is five and rear is five, which is, side is, five is pretty standard. Right now it's zero or five. And so we went with five, which is typical for residential. SF-6 is five.
I'm just, I'm not a developer, so I don't have a visual on what five means. If you have a one-story, I'm just in terms of what five feet would look like as a setback if you had a, you know, and maybe somebody who's on the, maybe one of you guys has a better idea. Anybody who has a better idea of this?
It's standard, like if you picture a standard residential development, five feet is a typical side yard setback in almost all residential development.
I guess what I'm thinking is, if you have a two-story building, is five-foot setback enough to be in respectful consideration of what could be a, you know, bungalow from the 30s?
I would say, yes, it's consistent with our setbacks in single-family residential zones, multifamily residential zones, PUDs. It's, it's a pretty standard.
Okay, that was the answer I was looking for, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Wieski?
Then Claudia, we, we saw a photograph, and I believe it was shown on Caliente, where there were two homes that looked, appeared that they were set way back towards the alley. I, I think of a, of a property in that area where there is two or three properties together. The front yards are used for gardens and landscaping, and then they've got maybe small 800-square-foot houses that are within five feet of the alley or less. So if that's the house next door, then how would that front setback work? I mean, if, if, if you've got, if you've got a lot, and I'm going to use round numbers, you've got a lot that's 100-foot deep, you've got a house that's setting back five feet off the alley, and it's 45, 40 feet long, then you've got 55 feet from back of curb to front of the house. Does that mean that the person moving in next door could only be 52 feet then? And would have a 52-foot setback from his front yard to the curb, right?
That is how it's written, yes.
Okay.
You could consider a maximum setback also for new development.
Okay, okay.
I'd be cautious with that one, though.
Yeah, I know, that, that might be another Pandora's Box, but I'm, I'm just trying to think of, you know, and then if you've got a house on each side of you, which one do you go with? I didn't see that in here.
That does need to be clarified.
Okay. That's just a thought I have that I think before we take any action on this, should be clarified and, and we should have some additional input on it. I will say that, you know, right now, and, and this is really for the commercial guys sitting in the audience, us dealing with the residential part of it now, I've got questions for the commercial end, but I think we're doing well on the residential. I'd like to keep going on this, because I'm in agreement with Commissioner Locke that I kind of like this MF-25 with design standards and proper setbacks and parking. I think we're going to protect the neighborhood to a certain degree from the tower, the monstrosity coming in that's going to break up the neighborhood, whether it be the gentleman sitting here today who have shown us some proposals, or the next company and group that comes in to develop their own piece of property, let alone for investment purposes. So I'm kind of leaning towards MF-25, just so you guys know.
Go ahead.
Jada Rayo Goodman for the record. I just wanted to clarify that they kept talking about a block and a half to two blocks, and that's off of Virginia Street, which on your map is this line right here. And so in this area, it's, if it's adjacent, sorry, if it's adjacent to Virginia Street, it's a minimum of 18. In the rest of that blue area, it's MF-30. And so when I was talking to him, the, the gentleman, the issue was, they, they felt that this particular area right here is where they're concerned. So it's, they're, they're not concerned with the entire, but this area actually meets where they're going.
Mr. Chairman, then for staff, how do we, how, is, is it possible to designate, and I don't know what the name of the street is, we have seen a line on the photograph, designate that street between South Virginia, west to whatever this line is on the photograph as being MF-25, that's apparently within a block or a block and a half of South Virginia? For the more dense, and then it graduates into a lower density as you move farther west?
If we can identify, just on the map, where that street is? Eric? No, sorry.
He's Googling it.
So it's a little difficult because the, you know, Virginia comes off at an angle to the southeast. What we're proposing is MF-25, which would possibly include a, a down zoning on the dark, dark blue area. But it, it's MF-25, three blocks deep down the entirety of Virginia Street, within the zone, the Midtown Station area. And that would actually wind up increasing the down-zoned area, which is the light blue, in certain circumstances and, and reducing it in others. In general, the further west you get from Virginia Street, the less appropriate dense development becomes, because it, you get more and more of the little red, like, little red brick bungalows that we all love, and frankly, Marmot tries to save. But you also have fairly high amount of blight close to Virginia. And that's typically within about three to five blocks of Virginia, and that's what we're targeting for reinvestment and redevelopment.
Okay, but once, Mr. Chairman, once again, we're not doing this for a specific development, and we've now gone from a block and a half to three to five blocks in. And, you know, we, we need some street names, I think, and we need to figure out if we're doing this for everybody or if we're doing it for specific development.
It's a good point. We were having a hard time distinguishing that, that street on there, that the one you drew in?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was the name of that one?
I, I believe it's Plumas on, on the Midtown Station area draft. But again, it, it jogs, is the challenge, so we can't really, I mean, using Plumas as a proxy, plus or minus a block, let's say.
I think we're in agreement in a detailed map.
Yeah, you need a more detailed map.
That would be much appreciated.
And we can?
Yeah, no, I mean?
This is, I mean, we can bring back this deal.
Bernie's suggesting Forest.
Forestry, yes, that, that would be more appropriate.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that's right. Right, right, so you don't, Plumas is too far west, so it's Forestry, we think is a pretty good proxy for that. And talking, talking with this nice lady here as well, Plumas, Plumas is too deep for, for, in our opinion, for the MF-25. Yeah. So Forest is probably a better proxy for MF-25.
Thank you. Has he answered your question?
Where's Forest on that?
This line.
Okay, thank you. No, no.
This one here. And then? So it's, Forest is east of Plumas, or, yeah, one block east of Plumas.
That's, well, then that's like five blocks from Virginia there, down at the southern part. That's not three blocks.
Yeah, that, that's the challenge, is Virginia's going to the southeast, so you'd, you'd have to potentially jog it down.
I mean, the, 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 sorry, Commissioner Stapleton for the record.
Thank you.
The, the dark blue part right now is jogged. You can just take that out, you know, on that bottom part, you take it out one more block and jog it the same way.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dagny, can you say that again, about the jogging?
Commissioner Stapleton, I like to jog down Virginia Street, and when I do, I typically?
Oh, I thought you were talking about?
No, I'm kidding. So, so where the dark blue, where the line is from light blue to dark blue, it's currently sort of jogs around in and out, that you could take three blocks and, and draw a line that wouldn't be a line, draw a boundary that would jog, you know, so that you would be at three blocks, similar to this. Just take it to the west a little bit on the southern part. Similar to the boundary now, just take it to the west a little bit, I think is the idea, right?
Go ahead and come up. Please state your name for the record.
Bernie Carter, for the record, if you do that, can you do it by definition, as opposed to change the boundary for the commercial? And there was the area that we have for the commercial, the dark blue, it would, we would request that you leave that, that area, not expand it further west, just by definition, say, okay, from this port, portion of street, so Forest Street down to where the jog is, and define it by streets, as opposed to trying to change the boundary of the commercial zones.
Okay, I'm sorry, so if I understand it correctly, this blue, this boundary doesn't represent just the density, it represents the commercial zoning as well as other things?
That's correct. The dark blue is a commercial zone, the light blue is a residential.
Okay, so then I'm wrong, we couldn't do it that way. I don't think we should do it that way then.
That's different than what our map shows us, Claudia.
The map, excuse me, the map in front of you is what's adopted for the Midtown District, the commercial district versus the residential district. So if you wanted to expand the 25 units to the acre further west, you could do, you could say, within the commercial district and the residential district east of whatever the street ends up being, Forest or whatever it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the commission?
From residential?
For residential?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a, a question, I'm, I'm done with the residential questions. I, I would just like to say that I, with the exception of the zoning maximum, as it's being proposed, I see where the setbacks work, with the exception of what I discussed earlier as far as which property designates the, adjoining property designates the setback dimension. And I, I think that the five feet on the sides is a little bit tight, but it seems to be what our standard is, and it's kind of been a recommendation from Reno Fire Department for the last decade or more, and that's what we've all accepted and adopted. for the last decade or more, and that's what we've all accepted and adopted. And although I drive that, I drive Plumas every day because I live on Plumas, I'm going to pay attention tonight and tomorrow and every other day to what setbacks are on those old original houses because I have a hard time believing they're five feet. I would almost like to see them stay with what makes up the neighborhood, but I'm okay with five feet. I think these, the rest of the design standards and things of trying to keep it, congruent, I believe is the word that I want to use, to the existing properties, it's a very good blend in the future development would really make, or remodels in this neighborhood would really make it a more attractive neighborhood than it already is, and it's a very attractive neighborhood. So I like where this is going, but, you know, we'll get some more answers. I would be ready to work on a motion. Right now, it's continuance until we get answers brought back for me.
Feelings from other commissioners?
Commissioner Kaufman, and I'm total agreement. I think Commissioner Wieske brought up a great point. How do we, you know, how do you deal with a house way back in the alley? And again, I, I would lean toward the 25 MF.
Thank you.
Commissioner Locke, if we're worried about the setback, couldn't we say something similar to what we say with the roof lines? Where's that with the roof lines? How we say, where's that part? I mean, because that, we're keeping the roof lines consistent, so why don't you keep the setbacks consistent? I mean, I've lived in that neighborhood for 15 years, and it's, it's a hairy mess over there. I mean, there's not consistent setbacks. So, I mean, I don't know how you solve that problem, because I do think you want to keep it, you know, you want to keep the flow of the neighborhood and not have the new stuff stick out. I don't know.
Commissioner Stapleton?
I'm glad that we're having a discussion on the setbacks because when I went through these design standards, if we're thinking about increasing the density, which I would be favorable to as well, then what is proposed, this is really the most important thing is making sure that these standards are going to, you know, create enough criteria to where we're going to get, if we have a higher density, we're going to get something that really isn't going to be offensive to any of the surrounding properties. So I agree that we should be talking about the setbacks and maybe, you know, I think that's why I asked that question of what does five feet look like on the side setbacks, you know, because I don't know, so maybe I'll drive the neighborhood too if we decide to continue it. But for me, or I would be comfortable with maybe just a little bit more setback, and then what if you've got, this question was probably asked already, but what if you've got a unit in the back and your path to get to the back is only a five-foot setback, then you've got, you know what I mean, you've got a lot of traffic going then right one foot against the residential, you know, the fence to the, then single family next door. So maybe that's a consideration if what we're really looking at here is a denser sort of multifamily on a 7,000 square foot lot, you know, maybe you need a little bit more than five feet, you know, or if it's an access, you know, I'm thinking about that, or if it's an access, you need more than five feet if it's going to be an access point for a rear unit, although I know a lot of those units are going to be accessed in some instances by alleys, just thinking about that stuff. So that is my concern as along with the other commissioners, but besides that, I'm agreeable to, you know, a little bit higher density than the 16.
And just to clarify one point you made on the, the design standards, if you'll note on 5A, excuse me, they're required to use at least two of the following techniques of those five techniques, so I just want to make sure you see that it is two of those. You said as long as they meet them all, and I just want to make sure that it's, they're not required, so make sure you're comfortable with that too.
Thank you for pointing that out. I didn't realize that, and I think that's something really important to think about, that all of these are not required if it is a higher density building, you know, next to, you know, what might be an older historic home, so maybe.
Commissioner Stapleton.
That was Commissioner Stapleton for the record, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Stapleton, just so you're.
Please state your name for the record.
Oh, Jada Royal-Goodwin for the record, sorry. The five feet is about the interior of this, and then bear in mind that it's actually 10 feet both on each property because it's 10 feet on each, five feet on each side plus five feet on each side of each property. So you would have 10 feet between two buildings.
Thank you. So from what I'm hearing is some concerns, questions from staff and from a couple not ready to move on with the motion. If we are considering a continuance, I want to make sure staff, if they believe they have all of the questions and concerns from tonight?
I think on residential, we have all the issues addressed and we can bring those back to you if you want to move to commercial. We're ready for that.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wieske?
Thank you, I'll start. First question that was brought up was hours of operation, and my question to staff is, based upon the meetings and the information that came from the community, why did we, why is there a recommendation before us or verbiage before us that uses different operating hours for South Virginia versus adjacent streets?
Jada Royal-Goodwin for the record, let me ask the question again to make sure I'm clear. So you're asking about why are there separate ones from facing Virginia versus non-adjacent properties?
Correct.
And I may need Claudia's help here, but the reasoning was those are 24-hour operations on, currently on Virginia Street, and as you moved away from Virginia Street, you start to rapidly get adjacent to residential properties.
Okay, but don't we currently have, if we're, if, if a business wants to, to open up and it's adjacent to residential, it should be a trigger for an SUP to begin with, correct, Claudia? Especially if it serves alcohol?
For, after 11:00?
After 11:00.
Not currently in the South Virginia Todd. South Virginia Todd, for the most part, is exempt from the 24-hour use, special use permit. I can double check on that.
Okay, so then how, if, if a person were to open up a brewery on Stewart Street, one half a block in or one, one building address in from South Virginia, what would they do to, to get business hours of either 24 hours or till 2:00 in the morning or whatever? What would their process be?
Under the draft?
Under the draft.
Currently, it's one block in, you can go to 1:00 AM.
Okay.
And then.
Was one block considered the alley because alleys are streets, or is it, how is that determined? What is one block?
It would not, the alley doesn't make the block, it would be the next full street.
Okay, okay.
And then beyond that, it's the 24-hour.
And then beyond that is.
It would be the standard after 11:00 to 6:00, special use permit.
Okay, so then it require, that's the trigger for a special use permit?
Right. And that was, that was something, it was definitely brought up by the neighbors that they were concerned about the hours of operation extending into the neighborhood.
Okay, so from South Virginia, then west to the first block, a business without a special use permit can be open till 1:00 AM, seven days a week?
Correct.
Okay. Then on page 86, wait a minute, I may be, no, I think. Never mind, you clarified it for me. Mr. Carter, if I could get you up to the podium real quick?
While he's walking up there, and currently in the South Virginia Todd, it's, you're exempt from the special use permit if you, if your business fronts South Virginia Street and is not adjacent to residentially zoned property. So right now, you have to front Virginia Street.
Uh huh.
To be exempt from the special use permit. So even if you were within that one block, but your business didn't front South Virginia Street, you would need the special use permit. So this is a little more liberal than the rest of the Todd.
Okay. You would need a special use permit to have your business open till 1:00 AM?
Anything past 11:00. Currently in the, in the Todd.
Okay, I thought you just said 1:00 AM.
No, that's the proposed, and you asked me what the existing zoning says.
Yes, the existing is till 11:00.
Correct.
The proposed is changing that to 1:00 AM.
1:00 AM within one block.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
I almost got confused. Mr. Carter.
Bernie Carter for the record, yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. The, the, the business that you were describing to us earlier, now with this new proposed operation, they would be in business not till 11:00 PM because they're within a block of South Virginia, would be allowed to be open till 1:00 AM without a special use permit, but they could get, could apply for a special use permit to stay open even longer, okay? Do you still see that as being a detriment to the commercial business in this neighborhood?
I believe that it is. If you look at not just the business that we spoke about, the restaurants, the French restaurants, that's a plate, the small plate restaurant, which that's part of his target market is to hit those people after midnight.
So he can, so he can apply for a special use permit?
Right. That's my understanding, yes.
And that's what Claudia has just told us is being proposed. I don't understand what the problem is.
Well, there isn't a problem.
Okay.
If he applies for a special use permit, and this is new knowledge to, to me, I'll tell you very honestly.
Okay.
We're under the understanding that if it faced on South Virginia Street, it was 24/7. This building that he'll be going into, the Delmar Station, faces on South Virginia Street, but he has a street address that's on St. Lawrence.
So that's, that's his face? That's the way code is written across the United States?
It faces that South, yeah, it faces St. Lawrence, and they have a specific street address that's St. Lawrence, it's 18 St. Lawrence as opposed to 713 South Virginia, which are in the same building. So I don't know, I mean, that's going to affect his business. The process to get a special use permit, I don't believe has ever crossed our minds because we always thought it was 24/7 in the stuff that's going in there. I don't know how it'll affect Craft Beer, which is, faces on, I think it's, is it Taylor?
Well, it won't change what, Claudia, will it change what existing businesses have? I mean, existing businesses.
Or Martin Street, I'm sorry, it faces Martin Street.
If, if the existing business has already been granted the special use permit, it stays with the property, right?
If the special use permit's in place, then it's in place. If they're operating past 11:00 now and didn't get a special use permit, then they might.
That's a different issue.
And they might need Joe, but.
Well, and then the other one, the third one I spoke of was Public House, which is exactly the same thing. It's, it's not a block off, it's half a block off, it faces St. Lawrence Street, which all of that area is, you know, heavy commercial, it's not, the residential's up on Forest, that's the first one.
So right now, they, under current code, they would need to close at 11:00. This is proposed, they could stay up until 1:00 or they could go past 1:00 with a special use permit.
Okay. I mean, we will address that with our, with our particular tenants. Those two that I just spoke of, Craft Beer and, and Public House are not, we have no control over what they do, but it does affect their businesses because I'm sure they're open past 11:00 now. I just.
Public House is past 11:00, but Craft is not, okay.
11:00, I apologize, I'm in bed, you know, about 9:30, that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Carter, I appreciate it. I mean, fellow commissioners, I mean, we may want to look at this and, and say on Friday night, Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, something like that, that, you know, they're open till 3:00 in the morning or something without a special use permit. But I, you know, I, I don't know that getting a special use permit for extended hours is all that difficult. What's the timeframe on it, Claudia?
65 days maximum.
So if a person starts it when they start their tenant improvement work or they start their business license process, they start putting their business together, they're pretty much in line with having those hours in a special use permit along with opening their business. You know, they're not going to do this after they do it. They would do it, I'm sure, when they start signing their lease and setting up their business plan, but that's just me.
We're also looking.
Thinking, I'm.
We're also looking at the process for a lot of those special use permits versus site plan reviews, and that's one that's been brought up in discussion for further, for the review of maybe switching that to a site plan review, but that's, that's down the road, but something that's been looked at.
Commissioner Stapleton? In my opinion, if you're going to have a business that's open till, you know, 1:00, 3:00 AM, you know, it's a sort of, I think, you know, there's a lot of times when you could substitute a site plan review, but getting a special use permit in that instance, I think is kind of important because then you notice the surrounding residents and so, I mean, I'm okay with that.
A site plan review does the same thing. It notices, does the postcards and posts the site. The only thing that doesn't happen is the public hearing unless it's appealed, but that's a different ordinance.
I'm okay with the special use permit.
Commissioner Kaufman? Any questions?
No comment.
Commissioner Locke?
I like the idea of the special use permit, for sure. I don't think we should change it.
Commissioner Wieske?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had another discussion I wanted to bring up, and it was, it was in regards to the street width of South Virginia, and I think I ran out of flags when I was flagging things, and so I lost my place, but I recall seeing that there would be, it's proposed, Midtown area is proposing for curbside parking, and then a bicycle lane, and then a vehicle traffic lane, and a transit lane. Did I misread that somewhere, Claudia, or?
I don't believe that's within the Midtown District ordinance, proposed ordinance.
Okay, did I pick that up out of one of the other transit corridors possibly?
I believe so.
Okay, what?
I don't believe that's under this agenda item.
It's not, okay. We'll bring it up at a later one?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, I'll hold that question till later then. Just didn't want to have a seven-lane street out there.
Any other questions, discussion?
Commissioner Kaufman, I think we should continue this so we can get the final back with the recommendations we made.
Commissioner Wieske?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do too. I think that we should continue it. We should ask that it be put on our next agenda, if it can be added to our April meeting. And that would, for those of you neighbors who are here, owners of properties in, in this Midtown area, give you an opportunity to go back and talk to your neighbors. I know there's a group, business group, I'm sure there's a residential group, kind of explain to them what we've discussed tonight, some of the things we're asking for additionally from staff. I don't know that you need to necessarily call for a special meeting, I'm not recommending or suggesting that, but I'd love to see this chamber filled with a few more bodies to let us know that the direction we're headed in is the direction that you guys, our interpretation of where you want to go. I'm, I see some minor modifications in here, and I'm, I am very proud of you guys, and you should be very proud of yourselves for what you've brought forward today. I know it's been a lot of hard work and staff's put a lot of time in it with this neighborhood. I don't want to rush through anything tonight.
I don't want to rush through anything tonight when we can maybe be there in a couple of weeks and get a few more people here for comments. Let us know we're doing the right thing. And if we're not, then we will change direction and go in the right direction for you.
Commissioner Stapleton?
I appreciate Commissioner Wieske's comments, and I agree with that. If it's something that it's okay for us to continue, does that mean it has to be renoticed again and everything like that? First question.
No, it's a text amendment, so we're fine.
Thank you. Just, just one other thing, and I don't want to go back into this, but the fact that you brought up this on page 92.5, that these five bullets of design standards, that it's only two out of five, that's not sufficient for me if we're going to raise the density. So just for the next meeting for other Commissioners too, this is something that I think we should really look at. I'm looking, for example, at bullet point, the fourth and fifth bullet points. I think, I don't know, I'm not a developer, it looks like those are two things you couldn't do together. Then I'm looking at the second and third bullet points. You'd plant a tree and orient your windows towards the inside. You could still build, build something that's really boxy and not necessarily respective to the surrounding property. So I would be in favor of four out of five, you know, or looking at all of these. But maybe that's a discussion that we can have next time if we want to look at this in a little more detail about these design standards. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Law?
I know that Bernie had had a couple questions or concerns about three different things that we didn't even get to. So are we going to talk about that next time? One of them is the fixture units, the FAR from 1.0 to .5, and then building orientation. So I think those are things that we need to think about for the next.
If I can comment on fixture units, I was trying to get ahold of our building official. That's a building code issue as far as I'm concerned, as far, as far as I know, as far as I'm concerned, as far as I know. And I would recommend against mixing the two ordinances, and I think Marilyn would probably back me up on that one. Fixer counts as something that's regulated through the building, or, building code, and so we would want to bring that into Title 18.
Okay.
We can bring that up to the Enterprise Committee for consideration and for that concern, but it's not something we want to include in 18.
Okay.
Commissioner Wieske?
Mr. Chairman, sorry. Mr. Carter, if you don't mind, back up to the podium. I didn't mean to catch you.
Commissioner Bernie Carter for the record.
I didn't mean to catch you short. I, I don't want to hit all the questions, that's all, but if we're, I think we should address the last couple of points that you had, especially the FAR, and, and I would like to have you start your conversation again with us regarding your, your new project that's under construction, how it's not able to meet the existing, and then also you mentioned, I believe, the Delmar Station building, which you have turned into a multi-use, multi-tenant building, that that doesn't meet it either as an existing structure. So if you would start that conversation over for us and let us carry on.
If I might, let me start with the Delmar Station. The reason that it doesn't meet the 1.0 FAR, which means 100% coverage of the lot, is that there's a five-foot strip that's in front of the Delmar Station. It's actually, I think it's about eight feet, that sidewalk area that's part of the property line, so that's private property. So basically what you're doing with the 1.0, when you start looking at other requirements, the landscaping requirements, the other requirements that you have, you can't, you have to build a multi-level building. The only way you can meet the FAR is to go a multi-level building. In retail, multi-level does not work. And so that's why the 1.0 is, is very onerous, especially in regard to the Delmar Station. The second one that I showed an example of was soup restaurant. When we did that, which was an old Palm Reader place, and we basically had to rebuild that building, they could not, they meet probably a .25 FAR and not a 1.0. So the only way that you could take that type of character of a building and, and improve it is tear it down and go all the way out to the property lines and do that density. The other thing that it precludes is any rear parking. So in both, in the Crem building, which is the Ace statue on the building, we created six parking spaces in the back of that, off the alley, and you couldn't do that with the FAR, because you don't, you'd have to build building all the way to the, to the alley. So it precludes that from happening also. In the building, the project that we're building now, the Sticks project, which is across the street, the big vacant lot, that would require 60,000 square feet of building to cover that lot, it's 63,000 square feet. We are putting, I believe it's 23 or 28 or something like that, 1,000 square feet in, in 16 small 1,000 to 2,000 square foot buildings. Between that, we have walkways. We have the landscape, as you see on South Virginia Street. We actually designed and worked with Claudia to develop the new corridor standards. That meets those standards. And so to do that, you couldn't have a 1.0 FAR. We couldn't take the street that we actually integrated from Center Street to South Virginia Street. You couldn't build that. So what that does is that eliminates, and it forces you to build blocks that cover 100% of the lot line. And it makes, it makes no development sense to do that, in my opinion, in our project. Nor do I think that that's what we want to do in, 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 in my estimation in the midtown project. Talking with other people, other landowners there, it's onerous to do that, to have 100%. So if they have to pull a permit, then they have to meet those new standards. If they do new construction, they've got to meet those standards. And that's part of the challenge that we have, is that we're stifling ourselves in our ability to attract new people and new developers into that area by doing that. Fortunately, in the midtown area, we do have some opportunities that I think will be very positive. We have, in, in the midtown area, there's, I believe that there's six different used car lots along the South Virginia Street corridor that will be developed at some time. And so what, what I don't think we want to do is to inhibit their ability to be creative and develop things that make midtown unique. And that's part of the challenge that we have. I would request that the FAR either, like you do the rest of the Todd, be eliminated entirely, or that it be a very small amount. 25%, I think would be, would be the most that, that would be manageable, that anybody could deal with that, because they are going to. The point that was made also at the meeting that we had at 5:30 is that developers will fill it up as much as they possibly can. That may be true, but they still want to have parking in the back, as we did. They don't want to go two-story with retail. And they want to make it so it's visibly appealing for people to come in, for shoppers to come in. That's part of what you're trying to do.
Okay, thank you. I, I believe, Jody, I believe you said that you felt, or staff felt, I'm sorry, not you personally, but staff felt that the regulation of 1.0 could be met. Did I mishear you?
There are a couple of things, yes. On the, on the other properties, there is the potential, like you said, there are some vacant properties that there has the potential that, to meet that requirement, which does currently exist in the Todd as well. And there, there are two other pieces. So with Delmar Station, even though it has sidewalk, and we've been having some debate about sidewalk, is or isn't included in determining that FAR, but it also has usable basement space that they use for storage, which would count towards their FAR as well. So it's not just client seating area, and those existing properties that don't meet it, so the soup building or the Crem building, they, if there were additions toward meeting it because they're existing structures, that would count. They wouldn't need, they would still be in compliance. So there are, there are mitigating factors, and even with the one, if you're building a brand-new building, again, you can get an SUP to not meet the FAR.
Okay, thank you.
That's acronym.
Claudia? Correct me if I'm wrong, but when we started talking about Todd corridors sometime around 2001, I think it was, 2002, and as they were coming through the, the NABS and getting community input, weren't these corridors set up for multi-story buildings? That was part of what is, makes a Todd, a Todd. And the density increases, so the idea behind these buildings was retail, commercial on street level, ground level, and then above that, residential was discussed, wasn't it, to increase the density?
Correct, and that's the.
Not multi-stories of resident, of the, of retail, retail, retail?
Correct, and the, the, the basic outline, the best practices of mixed-use development does have commercial or office, restaurant, retail on the first floor with residential above that. And that's, actually, there, there are some, there's some wording in the regional plan that suggests we should be requiring that mixed use within a, within a zoning district. We haven't gone that far in our Todd quarter. But that is really what supports that, to have that, that mixture of use within the commercial district, to have that residential present also.
Okay. To go back to that 5:30 meeting we had today, Mr. Krompotic mentioned that without that high, higher density, increased density, you don't have a Todd. I mean, I'm not a Todd genius or guru by any means, but.
You're becoming one.
No, I don't want to be one. I, without that residential aspect, do we have a Todd anymore?
There needs to be a residential component in a Todd to make it successful.
Okay. No further questions right now, Mr. Chairman. Thanks.
Commissioner Stapleton?
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Stapleton, I just want to follow on, on that discussion because I, I, I think Bernie's doing a great job, but I, I absolutely think that there are so many opportunities for second-story stuff on main, you know, commercial, in commercial neighborhoods like Midtown and in Todds. You know, I think about this in other cities. I think about this, you know, in Midtown, there's, you know, where the Indian Restaurant is, upstairs you got a dance studio. You know, that's one example. Or you have offices. And then, of course, residential's, you know, absolutely, you could do residential. A great example is the Lincoln Lounge. There's a beautiful loft above that, you know, and so, yeah. Not commercial, but, you know, retail, no, of course not on the second story, but there are so many other options for second stories that, you know, definitely, I'm not a developer, but I think that, you know, uses, you know, commercial uses and residential uses that you absolutely could make some money on, you know, if you have to build up a little higher. So I just want to chime in on that. And also in terms of, you know, the walkability and density in terms of being the, you know, things that really make a Todd a Todd. And I said this earlier in the meeting, to me, the orientation, you know, I'm flexible on, you know, density and floor area, although I, I do think that, you know, you absolutely can do it in terms of the second and even third stories. But the one thing I'm not flexible on is the orientation. I just think that that is really what makes that character, is having, you know, a, a front street, you know, frontage orientation for walkability. So that's my two cents on those topics.
Any other comments or discussion? Staff, do you feel like you have the thoughts of the Commission?
I will ask Jody that since I won't be here at the April meeting, and so she'll be solo on the city.
I believe so, but because, oh, Jody Royal, good one for the record. I believe so, but I'm going to go down the list of things that we're going to look at to come back with, just so I'm sure I have it. The, so we're going to talk about the potential for changing some zoning to MF25 in, did you, in the residential section, but did you want us to look at downzoning the, some section of the commercial as well? Did I hear that at one point?
I didn't. I'm, I'm only looking at the residential pieces for the MF25 application.
Okay. I'm good with that. And then the setbacks, again, related to the front setback and adjacent properties. In the commercial, we ended up good with the hours of operation or no? No?
I, I haven't noted that we had questions about hours of operation.
Okay.
Especially for, I believe, a block-in or block-nap-in.
Okay. And then.
Can I, can I jump in there? Can we refresh our memory on what the questions were? Because I, it was my understanding that we were okay with the way it was at the end of all that discussion.
We were looking at it later, potentially.
I, personally, I'm okay with the special use permit after 1:00 a.m. I like the proposed to 1:00 a.m. If you want to go beyond that, you need to get that, you know, make sure the neighbors, because that's really close to residential adjacency. It may include residential adjacency. It may be just far enough in, on LaRue or somewhere where it affects somebody's residency. So I would, after 1:00 in the morning, I, I would like to have the neighbors at least be made aware of it and brought before planning commission.
And that was kind of what I heard from all of you, so I was just seeing if there was a question. I think it was my recollection that we were okay on that issue.
That's my point.
Yeah, Commissioner Kaufman, I, I agree. I, I think it needs to be a special use permit if it goes past 1:00. And, you know, we've already expanded it from 11:01, and any farther than that, I'd rather see it come before us so the neighbors have a voice.
I, Commissioner Wieske, I think if there was any question, there was some discussion on whether or not, what the time process was at 65 days, if it could be speeded up, and it sounded like maybe staff was working on something. It's probably through NRS or some other legal obligation that prohibits it from going through any faster. But, you know, truly, 65 days is a pretty quick process, so I'm, just threw that out there.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're good with the hours of operation. I'll try to get some more information, or we'll get some information on the process. The fixture units is going to be left to building code. What specifically do you want us to be working on with the FAR?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Wieske?
I, I would, I would like to, to see if staff can work maybe with Mr. Carter, or if staff can, if any of the other property owners along South Virginia would bring their, their property forward as an example of how it works or does not work, would prohibit them at 1.0 versus 1.5 or .5 or .25, so that we have some examples that we can review before the meeting and then discuss during the meeting, I think would be very helpful for all of us.
Okay. And then building orientation, is there questions or we're set on that? All right, that's, did I miss anything?
Sorry, Commissioner Stapleton, in the residential portion, the design standards, the question of, we've got, we had five bullets, and this currently says that only two of them were required. I had a question that the last two, I think, could be mutually exclusive, and then there's ones that you could choose that wouldn't. I mean, I don't know, this, to me, is an important discussion point for the next meeting, because I think if we're looking at increasing density, as I said before, we have to talk about making sure we have good design standards in there.
So you're looking for that neighborhood attendance to, to have that discussion?
Yeah, yeah, and to me, this would be a discussion of, do we require all of these, or in my mind, definitely more than two out of the five.
Anything else I missed?
Thank you. Okay, if there's no further discussion, I believe we'll entertain a motion for continuance to the April meeting.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieske, make a motion that we continue this to the April Fourth meeting? April, April 4th meeting? And staff will bring us back additional information. That'd be great. We can move forward.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Kaufman, one second there.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. For the record, they continue past 5 to 0. Moving on to the next item, number seven, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Commissioner Wieske?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a meeting last week, I think it was. Very brief meeting. As far as action items, we had a, a couple of great educational presentations, and Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Authority is, is doing a great job with putting together some informational maps and, and additional GIS information, and, and it's, it's going to really be helpful to the community as a whole, so. Good job to those guys.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item number eight, staff announcements?
Okay, I'm going to combine all of these and jump right to City Council action taken on, action taken by City Council on previous planning commission items. Got a gaggle of them tonight. McCarran Crossing was continued to a later date to further study the southeast area, which Commissioner Stapleton mentioned earlier in our workshop setting. The adult business update was passed. The convenience store and service station modification was passed. However, staff did recommend that council remove the alcohol restriction, that council, Commissioner, sorry, I promoted you. Commissioner Stapleton discussed having concerns. We, legal had concerns, and other staff had concerns, and neighbors had concerns. So we pulled the alcohol item out of that ordinance, and we're going to address it on a citywide level. level. Yes. As soon as we get some staff to do that. But that's, we realize that it really, it needs to be looked at citywide, not just neighborhood by neighborhood. Yeah, where's she? Noise of residential property line was passed. The parking agreement, although you didn't act on the abandonment, the Lander Street abandonment itself, there was the parking agreement that that clarified what the parking arrangement, circulation issues and drop-off areas were for Our Lady of the Snows, that parking agreement passed. The use agreement for Lady of the Snows to use Plumas Park, that passed. And those are extensive agreements between the city and Our Lady of the Snows, so I won't get into details. And then Our Lady of the Snows was appealed by Councilwoman Brekis. However, it was found that the city did not have standing on the appeal, so the appeal was not heard.
What does that mean, the city doesn't have standing? Because she appealed it, and she's a councilwoman?
No, when, and Marilyn can jump in here if I get it wrong, but when somebody, when a person appeals any project that you approve or deny, they have to show that they're an aggrieved party, so that somehow they're an injured party. Councilwoman Brekis appealed it as a councilperson, not as an individual, so she was representing the city of Reno, so she had to show, demonstrate that the city of Reno was aggrieved, that somehow they were harmed. The council, the not a majority of the council agreed that the city of Reno was aggrieved, and therefore there was no standing, and the appeal was not heard. And coming up on the 27th, the MSFL, UNR Farms is scheduled for the 6 o'clock public hearing at council. That's all I have.
Commissioner Kaufman, Claudia, and Gaslight, I heard, was defeated.
Yes. Some reason I didn't mark the one on here. Gaslight was overturned, and that was denied. Yes, that was denied by city council.
And that was unanimous, I heard.
That was unanimous. Yes, it was 6-0. Councilman Dorch had a recuse, since he lives within the homeowner association area.
Great, thank you.
There was, there was a bit more, there was a bit more turnout than you had here. I think you had two people here, and it was standing room only for city council.
UNR Farms is going to be heard here, or?
It's scheduled to be heard here, yes.
Okay, and moving on to item number nine, Commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items?
I, Commissioner Kaufman, I have a question, and kind of for Marilyn. I happen to go to a city council meeting in another city, and one of the things I noticed was they did not require any seconds for any motions. If a motion was made, they went right, you know, had discussion, motion being made, and then kind of went right to a vote if there was no other questions or whatever.
Well, I don't, of course, I don't know what their reasoning was. A second is generally required to demonstrate that there is sufficient interest in the motion to have discussion regarding it. So that's a normal reason. It sounds to me like they have modified their Roberts rules or Mason's rules, whatever rules they run under, to eliminate that and determine that if any member of the body brings, makes a motion, that that is worthwhile discussing. That's not how we have done it. You know, I can look into whether it's a wise idea or not, but the idea generally is that the second is saying there's sufficient interest in the motion to move it forward to a discussion.
Okay, just curiosity. It was kind of interesting.
Thank you, and I have one, and not to sound like a broken record, but with our agenda item earlier tonight, going back to the maps, detailed maps that we can read. I know we've discussed this, I think it's already been mentioned that that will be supplied, and just like I said, squeaky wheel. Okay, the next item is number 10, public comment. This public comment item is to allow the public to provide general comment, public comment, and not for comment on individual action items contained for this agenda. I'd like to open the public comment.
Mr. Chairman, under public comment, I would just like to congratulate you on running, I believe, what might be your first two meetings as chairman, after all these years of being my vice chair and vice chair for others. I think you've done a great job.
Thank you very much. Just excuse the rough areas. It's skipping some open public comments. All right, with that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All right, so moved, thank you.